Recording in progress.
Thank you, Stephanie. Good afternoon. Please join us for our Board of County Commissioners meeting. It is Monday, March 28th. Join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands unisonous under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Thank you very much for joining us today. I believe Nathan Garabee will be with item number one. There he is.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Sorry for the delay. I was getting my video to work here.
Hello.
Good afternoon. I'm here before you for our annual Ask to Apply and Accept Homeland Security Grant Fund. So this is a program, these are federal dollars that are administered through the State of Oregon Office of Emergency Management. And they are really focused around supporting our, developing and supporting our continued resilience to domestic and natural hazard threats. This year is the second year where they've done both an allocation amount as well as a competitive grant. So we have four projects. These were chosen by a multi-agency group of stakeholders that recommended projects and then approved those. So our four projects, one for competitive is around $200,000 to support providing personal protective equipment to fire EMS agencies if they respond to an active threat or a tactical situation in support of law enforcement. And then that's the competitive project. And then we have three projects. One is to support La Pine Fire District in acquiring some additional equipment to complete their transition to the P-25 radio system, some night vision technology for City of Bend Police Department is the applicant, but that's in support of a multi-agency tactical team for Central Oregon. And then a $1,000 project for Crooked River Ranch Fire Protection District in support of a, developing a community emergency response team.
Thank you, Nathan. And why didn't Redmond or Sisters get anything?
So they, yeah, so the kind of the process we use is we send out a survey to all the public safety agencies in the county to see if they are interested in applying. We, as a result of those surveys, we then convene a meeting which all those agencies are invited to attend. And then really it's based on, on who has the needs for the year. So next year it's likely that other agencies will propose projects and they will get some of the allocation funds.
Okay. Thank you for that. I just, I was just wondering. And is this, this is actually Crooked River? Is that considering part of Crooked River is in Deschutes County? Is that why we have just a thousand for them?
Yeah, we, we try to support Crooked River Ranch as well as Jefferson County just because they're, they are a border jurisdiction, but they're part of our greater Deschutes County Public Safety Group.
I know every time I drive by their new way to, you know, exit case of a problem in their community, I'm always so happy to see that there is another way. So, yeah, I don't know if you worked on that, but I so appreciate it.
Yeah, I didn't have much to do with it, but it was a long time coming, for sure.
It did. It took a while, didn't it? And I was like, you really need more than one way out. And if you've driven on their roads, truly you do. So, good news. Any questions?
No. I mean, I was, I was interested in the process as well, but knowing that you accepted requests and input from all the public safety agencies in the county, I, I'm comfortable that these were the, the big ticket items that emerged out of that.
One question. So this is United States Department of Homeland Security and OEM. So these are federal dollars? Is that what it is? I guess that's my question.
Yeah, these are, these are federal dollars administered through the state Homeland Security Program. And so the, what will happen is the state will take a look at all the projects from all the counties and basically assess which projects the state is going to fund. And then they do that as part of their application to the federal government. So, yeah, they're federal dollars, but administered through Oregon Office of Emergency Management.
And then is this, this is an application. Is the competitive part worked out or is this unknown at this time?
It is unknown. There's, you know, there's, there's almost, there's usually about three times as many asks as there are dollars for the competitive program. What, what often happens is we will, we can get a partial award. So that's actually the case in this. This is, we received a partial award for the same project last year. So we're just keep applying the balance until we get that project completed.
Wonderful. So.
Are you ready for a motion?
Sure. Yeah, I'll move authorize Deschutes County Sheriff's Office to submit the Combined State Homeland Security Program Grant Application to Support Response and Preparedness activities of the Deschutes County Sheriff's Office, La Pine Fire District, Crooked River Ranch Fire District, and City of Bend Police Department.
Second.
Any further discussion? Commissioner DeBon?
Yes.
Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
And the Chair votes yes. Thank you, Nathan.
Thank you. Have a great afternoon.
Yes, thank you.
Chair?
Yes.
I just have a request. If the two, a couple of you can just bring your microphones just a little bit closer. Thank you.
All right. Is that better? Okay. Thank you, Nick. Item number two, I believe, Lee Randall and Captain Michael Schultz.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. For the record, Lee Randall, Facilities Director, and Captain Schultz from the Sheriff's Office is here with us as well. So before you, you have a Notice of Intent to Award Contract to Pinnacle Architecture for the Public Safety Campus Master Plan and Sheriff's Office Projects. I'd just like to provide a little background for discussion. In January, a review committee representing 911 Dispatch, Community Justice, Facilities, the Sheriff's Office, all reviewed proposals from architectural firms for design of the Public Safety Campus Master Plan and projects. And three firms responded. Pinnacle Architecture based in Bend was the highest scoring firm, and the selection committee recommends that the county execute a contract with Pinnacle for that work. The aim of the combined projects is to update the 2018 Master Plan and develop a schematic design for Sheriff's Office projects that were identified as part of the 2018 plan. It's a multi-year effort that's been budgeted by the Facilities Department for fiscal year '22 and '23, as well as by the Sheriff's Office, and will be sharing those costs. The master plan components of the project include updating the near-term, midterm, and long-term plans with specific improvements over the next 20 years, along with comprehensive cost estimates to the degree possible as we look at those improvements over time. A findings document to be presented to the Board of Commissioners for review and approval, and then that will set in motion a master plan that then will guide us over the, for the foreseeable future and help us make decisions as we go forward. On the Sheriff's Office side, there were needs which were specifically identified in the 2018 plan that were then part of the mid-year or midterm projected work that now are the near-term. And among those projects are related to the adult jail, expansion of in-person visitation, booking, and administration, expansion of inmate services like kitchen, laundry, storage, and medical, and as well as the creation of direct supervision, male and female units. And a lot of these things were things that were not included in the 2014 expansion, which was specific to just housing. And then on the Office, Sheriff's Office Administration side, expanded space for detectives and administration, expanded evidence storage, evaluation of maintenance and accessory storage buildings, as well as space for an exercising wellness facility. So those are, that's a broad picture of the general scope of work, and we're happy to accept any questions or comments you may have.
So I was trying to find, what is the amount of this contract award? And then what, you said we're sharing it with the Sheriff's Office? How much, what is the total? And so how much will our 50% be?
Sure. So the, we're, this Notice of Intent to Award is specific to the selection, the qualifications-based selection process, and then we would finalize negotiations for the actual contract amount subsequent to this notification. We've been working on that. We think that the final contract amount will be in the neighborhood of around $500,000. The, currently, the Facilities Department budget for that is around $200,000 plus, and the Sheriff's Office around $300,000. And that split is based on the public safety campus planning components versus the project components for the Sheriff's Office. And on the Sheriff's Office side, the project components are more than just planning. So it's really a pretty robust start to planning those projects, which includes first programming. So that'll include a lot of time working directly with the Sheriff's Office and analyzing the needs in the jail, analyzing what's, the potential is in the current footprint of the jail and footprint of the Sheriff's Office Administration Building, and then taking those, identifying projects and how those improvements can be made, and then taking them to a schematic design phase. So the schematic design really, at that stage, we're working out some of the constructibility issues, the square footages that are needed, and we're really getting into the nuts and bolts of design. On the public safety campus planning side, the goal is to create more conceptual level drawings and documents, as well as the cost estimates and long-term planning and recommendations. So, and those really relate to the shareholders, which I didn't mention, who are on the campus, which include 911 Dispatch, Community Justice, Adult Prole and Probation, Juvenile Justice, Oregon State Police, the Deschutes County Behavioral Health Team, which includes the Stabilization Center and Recovery Center, and the Sheriff's Office, of course, and then Veterans Village. So working together and coordinating with all of those groups takes a lot of time and effort, and as well as recognizing what their needs and trying to project what their needs will be over the next five to 20 years. And so that's really the bulk of the public safety campus planning side versus the Sheriff's Office project-specific side. And Mike, Captain Schultz, anything you want to add to that?
No, I think you covered it pretty well. We've, under the leadership of Mr. Randall, it's kind of nice to see the county and all of our partners that he just named, we're all in this together, and, and we look forward to the future so that we have a roadmap for, for the people that will survive us in our career field, and including people in government here in Deschutes County. So we're really looking forward to having a good document that we can come back, be open and transparent, so that we can talk about our future needs in Deschutes County. So I'm glad to be part of this first step, and that's what this is, the first step.
This is the first step. Okay, that's really good to know. I mean, we just had our tour of the jail, what, a couple of months ago, I believe? And I think everyone in Deschutes County wants a new commercial kitchen, because Redmond Senior Center wants a new kitchen. You know, we are getting requests from everyone to help with those commercial kitchens. It's really too bad that we couldn't all go together and buy them at this, you know, all those major appliances at the same moment to have a bit of cost savings. So, okay, well, I just, that's good to hear. Questions?
So you mentioned getting to schematic design. Are we setting up for kind of design bid-build projects, or this would get close to a design, then we'd talk about contracting afterwards, I'm sure?
I think the goal is to get us to the point where we can define the scope well enough to then make a determination whether to do design bid-build or a CMGC process, but really with the goal to get to that point where the scope is well enough to find that we can then make determinations about the contracting process.
And then, yeah, there's very specific projects we learned about at the jail, just the flow, and just like was mentioned, the kitchen and the laundry facilities, obviously. But just the administration and what's the future of public safety look like? So it evolves over time. So let's make sure we're setting up for the future.
No, and I agree. And that's, you know, discussing, the hope is that we, we maintain an efficient place where we're just not building jail beds. We have an efficient place that all people can come, services can be rendered in an efficient way, and, and a place that takes in mind on the wellness and the care of not only our staff, but the inmates that occupy our buildings.
Yep, sir.
Great.
I'm really excited to see this, this stage of design process move forward, and, and for us to have an opportunity to envision the facilities that we're going to need to provide services to the community in the years moving forward.
Is there a motion?
Yeah, I can, I'll move approval of document 20, number 2022-305, a Notice of Intent to Award Contract to Pinnacle Architecture for Design Services for the Public Safety Campus Master Plan and Sheriff's Office Projects.
I will second it.
Any other discussion? Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
Commissioner DeBon?
Yes.
And the Chair votes yes. So, thank you for joining us today.
So we're also up for the next item on your.
Yes.
Captain Schultz is going to remain with me for that as well. And we also have two gentlemen joining us by Zoom. So Jerry Mulrooney and Mike Di Pasquale from Plan B Consultancy should be on Zoom with us.
They are.
And now they're part of the meeting. Welcome.
Yes, thank you for joining us.
So I'll start with.
Good afternoon.
Some introductions. So this is for the Notice of Intent to Award Contract to LRS Architects for the Courthouse Expansion Project. And as I mentioned, we have our owners' representation consultants here with us today. Jerry Mulrooney is the project executive for Plan B Consultancy, and Mike Di Pasquale is the project manager. So gentlemen, I'll let you introduce yourselves.
Mr. Randall, good afternoon, folks. I'm Jared Mulrooney with Plan B Consultancy. And I've got my right-hand man along with me, Mike Di Pasquale. This is the first time we've had an opportunity just to, to say hello and introduce ourselves. And we're very much looking forward to, to completing this, this major milestone with appointing our design team. And then over the next couple of weeks and months, doing the same with our general contractor to complete the main team that's going to take this project forward. You will get used to our accents and our faces as we move forward, giving you updates throughout the design stages and as we head into the construction stage. So it's just a very quick hello, and nice to meet you, and looking forward to working with you.
Yes, nice, nice hearing your accents today.
Yes, thank you. Nice to meet you.
Which continent are you on?
Well, I'm on the North American Continent, so I'm originally from Ireland.
There we go.
Okay. Wow, we love Ireland. Thank you.
Thank you.
So Plan B has been on board, helping us manage the early stages of the project, including the selection of the architect firm, which is why we're here with you today. So the Facilities Department issued an RFP for Design Services for the Courthouse Expansion in late January. The selection process is nearing completion. LRS Architects has offices here in Bend and in Portland, and they received the highest scores in both the proposal and interview rounds. The proposals were due February 24th, and they were reviewed by a panel drawn from our Facility Project Review Committee, the State Circuit Court, the Facilities Department, and the Sheriff's Office. Three firms submitted proposals, and as I mentioned, LRS was the high-scoring firm and was recommended by the committee, the selection committee, for the Board's consideration. LRS proposes to work with local subconsultants for structural, plumbing, and fire protection, civil design, and landscape design, and then electrical, mechanical, and security consultants would be from out of the area, from out of Portland offices. The, that really is kind of the summary at this point, in terms of the overall project. In the meantime, we've also been working on things like site survey and geotechnical reporting, and utility locating, kind of those very beginning stages of a project, and gathering that information so that once we have the architectural team on board, we'll be ready with the information needed to proceed with the project. So any, any questions at this time? We're happy to take questions.
So Lee, do you have an updated cost per square foot in today's world? Just wondering where that's going, since we're seeing, you know, paint going up 25%, etc.? Is there a new number that we need to be looking at? I know we were just awarded 1.5 million from the state, but of course, that's a drop.
Right. So we have our budget estimate that we, from last spring, that we have used. And as you can imagine, in the economic news that we're seeing daily, there have been significant cost increases in a lot of the commodities related to construction. So concrete, steel, all the things that are driven by fuel costs. So costs are going up. Plan B has been working on utilizing the same methodology that we use to establish those prices, basically a rough order of magnitude, square footage cost, based on other projects that were going on at the time. They have, are finalizing those numbers for us, and we'll be sharing those shortly with you. But there have been, as you can imagine, significant increases, and we're looking at how to, how to manage those. But in terms of, they, at this point, it's looking like they'll mirror what we're seeing with inflation in construction costs. But we'll be getting those final numbers kind of coordinated and presented to the Board shortly.
Like in two weeks, or what's?
Yes. We're hoping by the end of the week to.
Until this week?
Share those with you. Yep.
Okay. I know, I think I just heard home mortgages have gone up to, what, 4.9% or something? I heard that on the news today. It's like, oh, my gosh, they were, what, 2.75? Not that long ago? So, okay. Any questions?
Well, it's good to have LRS joining us, and thanks to the Plan B team for being our partner at this point in time. It's a big project, integrating it to an existing building is, is the third generation of the existing building, in fact. So that'll be quite a step. Watching those construction prices escalate right now is, is, you know, hard to swallow at this point in time, but we'll get through it. We sure have the need in our community for the judge space, the courtroom space.
Yes, the new judge has already started, so.
And we've been working closely with the state courts to help provide accommodations and help them to be able to do their work in the meantime, so.
Great, thank you.
Captain Schultz, were you part of the review group for, for this, this contract?
I was not, but we had Lieutenant Michael Gill, who has, has worked in our system with the courts and lived in Bend a lot longer than I have, who was part of that review system.
Great. I don't have, I don't have any other questions.
Captain Schultz, did you have anything you wanted to add?
I did not.
Okay. All right.
Yeah, with that, I'll make a motion for approval of document number 2022-312, Notice of Intent to Award Contract to LRS Architects. Second.
Any other discussion? Commissioner DeBon?
Yes.
Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
And the Chair votes yes. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
It's exciting to do the next remodel. Thank goodness, we're going to have two more judges, you know, to put in, into the building comfortably when, when it's done. So, thank you, Lee. I know you have a very full plate.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you. Thanks for joining us.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, item number four, restorative justice. I think I saw, Holly? Kathleen?
Hi, actually, it's Kathleen.
Yes, Kathleen.
Thanks for having me today. For the record, it's Kathleen Neen Coop, Management Analyst at the DA's office. And I'm here to discuss a grant application that we're planning to submit to the Criminal Justice Commission for Restorative Justice. About a year ago, we spoke to you individually about a pilot that we were running, our Emerging Adult Program, which was a pre-charge restorative justice initiative for young adults here in Deschutes County that had committed a crime and getting them into services. That pilot is still running right at the moment, but initial indications that it's been successful to date. And we have an opportunity, as we were launching our pilot, to kind of test out the concept. The Criminal Justice Commission got funding to support new opportunities that are coming up specifically around restorative justice. So we are looking to submit an application for that. Kind of give you a little bit of background on our current program. Our goal was to have 12 young adults enrolled. We have 10 so far. One is graduated. Three are on schedule to graduate in April, and one was revoked from the program, failed to continue to engage. But everybody else seems to be doing fairly well. Our new grant opportunity will allow us to kind of expand the program to, number one, look at a lot more. will allow us to kind of expand the program to, number one, look at a lot more cases. For us also to kind of step up the restorative justice piece. A big portion of restorative justice is around dealing with victims. And our circles were run with community volunteers who were trained but had a limited amount of training. And although they're doing a great job, we still plan to continue that piece. But we wanted to expand the program to deal with cases that had more of a traditional victim. So we're gonna be working much more closely under this grant application with Community Solutions, and they will be taking about half the cases, as with trained mediators and facilitators, running those restorative circles. And we will also be working even with more enhanced relationships with Thrive Central Oregon. And they've been providing our case management, case management for our programs. But going forward, they will also be providing it not just for the offender, but for the victim as well. It's a two-year grant opportunity that we're looking at. And with those subcontracts for Community Solutions and Thrive, and we're also looking at, at bringing on three halftime members for the DA teams, specifically halftime DDA, a TA kind of program specialist to help with the project management, and then a victim advocate that will all be grant-funded through this initiative. Part of the reason we want to do this is that we've kind of tested a lot of elements with our pilot, but it was very small. And for us to get a really, but, strong understanding of the impact of the program, we need a larger sample and pool to pull from to see if this program has more significant impact. And we also realized through this process, there were a number of cases that would have potentially been eligible, but we were just focused on individuals that lived here in Deschutes County. But a lot of times, people are visiting from out of the area. So going forward, our program would actually also include individuals that are in Crook and Jefferson County, that they may live there, but they were here in Deschutes County and committed their crimes. So we could incorporate them into the program as well.
Thank you, Kathleen. Other questions?
Kathleen, the funds that you used to initiate this program were, that was not the same fund source. Was, was that a federal grant?
No, actually, we paid for this, the activities directly out of the DA's budget for our initial pilot.
This is a great opportunity.
And some of the things that we, we learned through that process is that we really need a dedicated staff to kind of manage the programs, particularly if we're increasing the numbers. Because just coordinating and pulling these cases out of the traditional prosecution is more time-consuming. So we, that's why we're asking for the funds specifically to fund staff.
Great, thanks.
Is there any efforts at the state through the Criminal Justice Commission going down this restorative justice path? As in other programs around the state or, you know, requests for ideas along this, do you know?
So, if I understand your question, this is kind of their first step into this realm. And they're looking at this kind of as initial babysit. My understanding is that they're hoping to expand this grant opportunity going forward in the next biennium. This was officially supposed to start in the current biennium, but the program is just launching. They'll find out about funding probably at the end of May timeframe.
And how many people served in the current kind of effort you mentioned?
Our goal is 12, so we're still recruiting our last two. But we have 10 individuals in the program, and we're looking to expand to 50 cases under the grant.
And, and the, and the program, the six-month program, it's pretty individualized. So like, you can bring someone in at any point and they, and they, you know, can start their six months of, of processes, getting the mix of services that they need. It's not like you have to have a batch or a cohort and that they all go through at the same time.
Correct. So as soon as we identify the case and we staff it internally, we make that decision and invite the person to the program. So we, everyone's starting at a different timeframe. And the services that are provided are very individualized to that individual, and going forward as well as for the victim, too.
So Kathleen, you're saying with the $4 million, you're gonna be able to serve 50 individuals?
So our request will be under $1 million. It's a $4 million grant funding opportunity. There's actually very few organizations, communities that are actually going to be applying for the funding. And we looked at applying, our request is about 950,000-ish.
Okay.
So oftentimes with, with programs like this, I ask people, you know, how do you, how do you measure performance or, or, you know, the, the success or effectiveness of your program? You know, I understand you've got a, still a very new program. You have a pretty small sample size that you're looking at. So, and that part of your goal is to grow the program so that you do have a larger number of, of people coming through. So you do have a better basis to evaluate. But I, I mean, with the, the, the 10 people who are either in progress or graduated right now, I mean, how do you, is, are there, are there things that you're looking for to kind of, you know, kind of, on an anecdotal basis, evaluate whether you're, whether the program's working or not? Or, or, I mean, is there, is there a certain point, you know, when someone's three months through this, into this, where you're like, oh, yeah, this is, this is, you know, this person's gonna make it through, and they're gonna be in a better place when they come out?
So we're looking at a variety of things. And one of the things we're gonna do with the grant funding is work with a researcher to help develop kind of a pre and post survey, not just for the program participants, but the victims and our stakeholders to kind of track. And although we won't even at that point have enough data for a full, comprehensive external evaluation, it'll set us up going forward. But some of the key metrics that we'll be looking at, and some of these need to be done over a long period of time, using the state's definition for recidivism, we'll kind of be tracking recidivism rates of program participants. But for that true definition, you have to look over a three-year period of time after they've completed the program. So we'll be tracking that. We're also gonna be looking at the programs that the young people are engaged in. Are they attending what types of services? Have they been following through? So we've been kind of identifying some of the programs and what, I mean, example, that we've had a number of young people that who've entered the program, who are in their early twenties and don't have a driver's license. So one, a lot of times, one of their requirements is, hey, we want you to work on getting your driver's license. That'll help make getting a job easier. We're connecting them with WorkSource. And so identifying those kind of services so that if they entered the program unemployed, you know, at the end of the six months, have they secured a position? Have they gotten on, maybe, they may not have found housing, but are they on the waitlist to have stable housing? And kind of some of those types of metrics along the way.
Thank you.
So Kathleen, you started with nine people that have come in on different days. Now, one person was revoked, and that, was that, did that take a couple of months to determine that it just wasn't working for that person?
The first individual came to all the program meetings for the first four months, and then he just stopped coming to the program meetings. So when he stopped coming, the case was revoked from the program. We reached out to him, tried to connect with him on multiple occasions, and he never responded.
Did he move away or something? Do you know?
He, he had moved to Portland, and we allowed him to move to Portland and continue with the program because his requirements, he had finished some of the initial requirements that really needed him to be here in Deschutes County. But when he left, he no longer stayed in touch. And that was part of the agreement, that we said, well, you can move to Portland, but you just have to maintain and come to those last couple meetings.
Okay. Well, thank you for those details.
So if, another half a step on this generic case we're talking about here. So now there's charges pending? Or, I mean, what, what happens?
So typically, a charge would pending, would be pending. This was actually one of the first cases to come into the program. The attorney that was eventually assigned this case decided not to charge in this situation. And we've kind of shifted and made some adjustments internally in our program to ensure that any case that enters the program, if the young person does not complete, that there would be charges going forward. So it was kind of one of our, it was a learning step with that particular program.
Yeah. So I've always struggled with that concept. You know, somebody could end up in a gray area. It's like, okay, they've been charged with something, but they're doing a program, so they're not quite in, go happen to go to court. But as long as they do what the, somebody says, you know. So I just worry about that, that gray area situation that could happen sometimes. Hopefully, this is running very well, and it's really positive. But, you know, let's always watch out for that also.
And one of the things that we are changing going forward, we had the young people meeting with a pro bono defense attorney, which is, we kind of developed that and worked with our volunteers. They, the young people had to sign a waiver saying that, I understand I'm not officially being represented by this attorney, but they are providing me with some background information. Going forward, under the new grant, we'll be partnering with Deschutes defenders and running the program similar to what we did with Clean Slate, with, during the orientation, they will actually be represented by a public defender. And Deschutes defenders has their contract that allows them to be paid through the state for providing those services, even though the case has not gone to court yet. So that's one of the other program improvements.
Well, yeah, so I'm, now the state's gonna pay on both sides of this. We're gonna get grants from the state to help the DA's office put a program together and have more people paid at the defense office to help communicate with this person instead of sending them to the court system. So I, we should keep the big picture in mind here, too. Maybe it's more efficient to just get clear charges and clarity on, you know, the, the case that was put in place. I wish the program well, but I just, you know, sometimes like, oh, we, we had to hire more people to do more services.
Understand. I think one of the challenges and what we're trying to prevent is that for a lot of young people, if you end up with a felony or even a misdemeanor on your, on your record, that follows you for the rest of your life. And if we can take in these cases pre-charge, then we're able to remove that future barrier for these young people that made, you know, a poor decision and get them back on the right track going forward. So they'll be more productive citizens in the future.
Well, and yeah, so then this is the political divide. Because if you have a clear court system where there's, you know, charges made and, you know, followed through on, then the next person's gonna say, oh, I shouldn't go down that path. Instead of, well, if I do some felonious activity and I do a bunch of six months of classes and the government pays a bunch of stuff on both sides, maybe I won't be charged with it. I mean, yeah, it just makes it a gray area.
I think there's a lot of research out there that kind of shows that for most people, when they've engaged in an activity that may result in criminal charges, they haven't sat down and actually thought that clearly about it. Usually, frequently, it's a more passionate action that's resulted in their activity and not necessarily a well-thought-out plan.
That's what I was hearing from the manager of the Marketing Sisters, that people were applying, but they had a record, and he wasn't able to hire them. So, yeah. You know, that, as you said, that can follow you your entire life. So hopefully, your program will be striving to say how important it is to get this off your record and to actually have a better plan. So is there a motion?
Yes. Yeah. I, I would, I would just say, I, the idea that early intervention might produce better outcomes for someone, I, I'm supportive, or I, I buy the argument. And with that, I will move to approve authorization to apply for the commission, the commission?
Criminal justice, yeah.
Criminal justice commissions, FY22 Restorative Justice Grant Program.
And I'll second it.
Any other discussion? Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
Commissioner DeBonne?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. Thank you, Kathleen.
Thank you.
Okay, item number five. Good afternoon, Holly?
Good afternoon. Thank you for having me.
Thank you for being here in person.
Of course. Holly Harris, Program Manager for Behavioral Health. I'm here today to request approval to apply for the Oregon Criminal Justice Commission IMPAX Grant, which IMPAX stands for Improving People's Access to Community-Based Treatments, Supports, and Services. And as you know, this was a grant we were awarded two years ago in the amount of a little over $2.4 million for the biennium. And so we have the opportunity to reapply. And we are set up really for success with this grant, with board approval to apply. And it's just a one-page application this year. And it sounds as though current grantees who are doing well are, you know, really set up for success in possibly receiving additional funds for the next two years. In addition to this grant, I recently found out, thanks in part, a large part to Commissioner Adair, about another grant, grant opportunity that's a matching grant to this one. I found out about it after this agenda item was submitted. So I'm hoping we can get approval for both today, but if not, I will certainly try and come back. But this is for the Central Oregon Health Council Grant. It's a matching grant for up to $250,000, which we will obviously, with board approval, request the full $250,000. And that will help supplement this IMPAX Grant. The, even though we're gonna be requesting the full amount for the IMPAX Grant that we received last time, it doesn't actually cover all of our same costs. Because as you probably remember, we had two other grants that were paying for part of the first year of the IMPAX Grant last time. And those, one of them has completely expired. The other one will be expiring in December and is not one that can be renewed. So we will need to be filling that gap with something. So the Central Oregon Health Council Grant would be a great way to fill that gap. And so we're really excited about the opportunity to do that. And they are due simultaneously. So thank you, Commissioner Adair.
No, I'm just very thankful that, you know, I asked.
Yes.
Out of like, yes. So, you know, $250,000 is a quarter of a million, and that's significant for the stabilization costs. Yes, and we, we'll probably have to have that in a separate request while we dive.
Include it here.
Okay, great. Oh, good. Saves time, saves money, and gets the application in. So that's
good.
So if we do the Health Council Grant, that's an application for that amount, is it mentioned in the IMPAX Grant? Is that the idea, or?
No, it's actually, the IMPAX Grant
Separate.
Require a match. And so this actually, the COHC Grant does require the submission of that application with, with the COHC application. So I have
You qualify for one, you qualify for the other.
They're willing to provide the matching funds if you've got something else going.
Correct.
Okay.
Well, I, I'm assuming I'll have to get approval. But yes, that's the, that's the idea.
And then, so the Criminal Justice Commission, this is the, the two-year cycle that's coming around. It's gonna be real important to get these dollars to keep that facility open 24/7.
Correct. And we have, I will say, we've been told that we are doing one of the best grantees receiving these funds. Our data has really proven that we're very successful. They're, they use us as an example oftentimes. And so I think this is another wonderful opportunity to continue to gather more data, to show outcomes and why it's important that we're 24/7. And my hope is, hopefully, long-term, possibly the IMPAX funding could potentially become, you know, ongoing, sustainable funding. That was something that was discussed early on. That was kind of, I think, the goal and the hope. But whether that happens or not, you know, remains to be seen. But that would be ideal.
Maybe we can accomplish that in the long session this next year, right?
That would be wonderful.
Make that a goal.
Yes.
Probably. Politically, it'd probably be helpful if they, if they went beyond the original grantees and hit some other communities, too, but.
That's true.
Yeah.
Still only $10 million for the state. So we are, I, I feel very, very fortunate that we've received so much of that $10 million for the state, 2.4, a little over 2.4. We're the second-largest award. We were last time, the second-largest award for the state.
Yeah. So if we want to advocate for that, maybe we, we ask that they bump up the amounts so that more communities can take part.
I, that would be wonderful.
Yes.
One of the things I wanted to ask, so, you know, in the, in the grand scheme, big picture of keeping the Stabilization Center open 24/7 and running, and also doing everything else that Crisis Services is doing, and expanding that on, you know, the, expanding on the programming through the Mobile Crisis Assessment Team, one of the things I wanted to ask is whether this same funding source, whether we could be applying that to other components within, of Crisis Services work, like, like the Mobile Crisis Assessment Team, if we didn't need it, you know, to, you know, as, as kind of anchor funding for the Stabilization Center?
I think, well, so the application for this year requires that we not change anything in our program substantially. In theory, though, to your question, I mean, other communities have not done stabilization centers. Other communities that applied for IMPAX grant funding did all sorts of different types of programs. This was really intended to be kind of pilot funding, to see what creative ideas were put out there and what communities did with the money. And I think some of the programs have been more successful than others. Ours has been one of the successful ones. So I think for us, we'll continue with that application this way, because it just requires a one-page application. We'd have to completely application this way because it just requires a one-page application. We'd have to completely reapply if we changed anything. And I think also, to your point, there is a, well, I wouldn't say substantial, there's some money coming for expansion of Mobile Crisis that we actually just received an amendment for from the Oregon Health Authority. So we will be receiving, I think it's around $363,000 for the biennium to apply towards Mobile Crisis specifically so that we can do exactly what you're talking about, which is grow that team a little bit so that we can respond to certain calls without police.
Yeah, yeah. And when the, when the places I'm going with this is, I'm just trying to understand which funding sources could cover which things. Because they're, you know, as we, as we make the rounds and ask our partners for support for the stabilization center, I'm, I'm wondering if there might be some partners who are more willing, who might be more willing to partner with us and invest in the Mobile Crisis Services rather than the stabilization center. I, I feel like the physical location of the stabilization center in Bend is, is a barrier in some ways. You know, so if we asked one of the other communities, would you support Mobile Crisis Services? Because Mobile Crisis Services go all over the county. Then we wouldn't be running into the, you know, well, that's in Bend and, and, you know, Ben should be, you know, providing more, more support for that because it's, it's closer to them. That's just kind of the line. One of the reasons I'm trying to figure out how flexible each funding source is.
Yeah, they're not as flexible as we'd like them to always be. I do think there's opportunities probably along those lines. I mean, I think for me, operating the entire crisis program, I, like, these different nuances in our world don't, don't really align because it's really all one program. And without Mobile Crisis, without Stabilization Center, without our co-responder program, without all these pieces, they, they all work so seamlessly together. And without one, you definitely feel a gap. So funding towards the crisis program is really, you know, a smart approach to this as opposed to these different buckets. But sometimes the state funding or the federal funding comes and they do have to be assigned to these different buckets.
Got it. Well, it's good to understand the, good to understand the state bucket so that we can, if there are more flexible localized fund sources that we can, like, you know, like, how do we use the general fund component of what goes into crisis services, you know?
Well, the fact that 63% of the people that are using the stabilization center are from the city of Bend, I can understand that argument. But truly, it's only 14 miles to Redmond. And if someone needs to come to the stabilization center, it's, it's really only 14 miles, you know?
And I think.
It's nothing.
Yeah. And Chief Lewis said it best at a meeting recently where, I mean, it's, it still saves them time to come to the stabilization center. It is faster than going to the hospital. And I think if you look big picture, the outcomes that we see for people coming to the stabilization center versus an emergency department without those follow-up services that can happen, we really improve people's lives to the point that they're not going to come up for law enforcement in the future. And so, you know, we've got to think about the whole, the whole picture that way.
But, I mean, but, but might it be easier to ask Redmond for funding for Mobile Crisis as opposed to for the stabilization center?
We haven't tried that approach yet, but possibly. And we also have the opportunity at the Redmond campus to expand our crisis services there, which I think are also a really critical component of this whole continuum. Because while we may be able to serve many people just in Redmond at that location, many of them will also need to come to the stabilization center for the 24-hour services that we offer here that we're not going to be able to offer there.
Yeah, when you're talking about spending $3.6 million to run this center on a 24/7, I can't see us spending, you know, another $2 million in Redmond other than maybe that short day. You know, the, what is it, eight to five or nine to five or something like that?
Yeah.
And it's, and truly, because the sheriff's office is now covering Sisters and they're, you know, they're so cued into the stabilization center, I really feel like, it's, it's in a really good location for the community. And it's, you know, even Creek County, Prineville, and, you know, Madras, it's not that far.
5% of the people we're serving are coming from Creek County now, and that number continues to just.
5%?
5%.
Okay, that's definitely gone up. Wasn't it like three or two?
3%, probably last time I came. So I check my dashboard about every morning. And those numbers change obviously regularly. But I have seen a continued increase in those numbers from the other counties. So that's something that we're excited to see.
Good. That's great. I'll remind that to Judge Crawford.
Okay.
Just thinking, man.
Yes. Any other questions, Commissioner DeBonne?
No.
Is there a motion? And we want to make this a joint motion so that Holly can proceed, I believe, if that's possible.
I'll move approval to apply for the Oregon Criminal Justice Commission IMPAX grant and the Central Oregon Health Council Grant mentioned for $250,000 for the stabilization center.
Second.
Any further discussion? Commissioner DeBonne?
Yes.
And Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
And the Chair of the Chaffs.
Thank you all so much.
Good. Holly, maybe we saved you a little bit of time today.
It was really helpful.
Is that possible? Okay. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Greg Munn from County Finance. I'm here with the monthly finance report. And in your packet is the report, and it's for fiscal activity year-to-date through the end of February. So we're about a month out. The portfolio balance, which comprises of all of our investments and cash we have in the bank, totals $278 million at the end of February. And that's a decrease of $8 million from last month, but an increase of $22 million from the February before, February of 2021. And again, that's due primarily to the $19 million infusion of ARPA funds in May, which we'll also receive another infusion of the second tranche of ARPA funds coming up here in the next couple of months to finish this off at $38 million.
So, so Greg, the $19 million of ARPA funds accounts for $22 million of the increase, but, but.
What's the rest?
But, yeah, not all of it.
Yeah, not all of it, yeah. That's the primary piece, though.
Okay. And the, the $3 million, the what?
Natural increase in.
Property tax revenue?
Tax-based revenue, yeah.
Okay.
So investment income for the month is about $125,000. That's $52,000 less than it was in February of 2021. So we're continuing to see that decline. But I have maybe a little good news here in a moment. And year-to-date, we're down $657,000 in interest earnings from about $1.7 million last year to a little over $1 million year-to-date this year. So we've watched rates decline pretty regularly over the months and including the LGIP. So as you see in the report here, the interest rate on our pooled funds is 45 basis points. While that hasn't changed from last month, it was actually increased in March. So it won't show up in this report, but it'll show up the next one by 10 basis points. So we're starting to see the impact of what's going on in the market in our investment portfolio. So it's going from 45 basis points, which is a little less than one, half of 1% to 55 basis points. And it was effective March 16th, I believe. So a couple of weeks ago. So our average portfolio return, it's in this yield percentages box to the right and in the middle, is 60 basis points. And that number had been dropping 1, 2, 3, 4 basis points per month, month over month, and it's stabilized at 60. So no change from, from last month to this month. And probably one of the key changes that we're noticing in the last couple of months is the benchmarks at the 24-month Treasury and the 36-month Treasury benchmarks. So right now, at the end of February, the 24-month benchmark is paying 1.44% yield and 1.62% yield on the 36-month. Those are up 26 basis points and 23 basis points from last month. And this is a similar story I've been telling you the last few months. So if you flip the page, you can actually see a picture of it. If you look at the 24-month historic investment returns graphic at the top there and focus on the red line, you'll see a pretty steep increase. That's the two-year Treasury rate. So that will, I expect that will continue to reflect in, based on what's going on in the market and as the, as the Treasury increases their, the discount rate. It's supposed to be like six more times this year. So I think we'll end up seeing more and more of that grow. And the counties, the counties line, which is the blue line, will tend to follow what's going on with the rest of the market. So there'll be an increase in the rest of the market, and then the county's average yield will increase. And likewise, when the rest of the market is going down, the county's line will trail behind that. So if you flip the page and look at the investment details, one thing I'd like to point out is you notice there's those investments that we've purchased in February that are highlighted in blue, and then last February, for context, highlighted in gray. And the two that are in blue have a yield to maturity. It's, I don't know if you can see it, it's pretty small print, but the fourth column from the right.
.87 or something?
.57 for one of the first Treasury. You see that?
Yeah.
And then .85. And then if you look at the numbers corresponding on the gray investments, you'll notice that those are quite a bit lower, or at that mark or lower. And that was a year ago. So again, this is where we're seeing the rates increase, even on a U.S. Treasury, which is generally, is usually one of the lower yields because it's, it's the safest investment, instrument that we have. So that's a little bit of good news, at least in terms of return. You turn the page, the position control summary, just real quick. Total approved positions through the end of February was 1,127.41, and that's 7.9, 7.9 increase over the prior month. Seven of those FTEs were in health services, and .9 was in the DA, the DA's office. And those were positions that you approved over the course of the month. Flipping the page.
Can you remind me who left the veterans' office?
Good question. If Eric Crop's available, he may, well, no, he oversees veterans.
I think I know who it was, but I just was wondering. Because I know we really need five people there.
Yeah.
And hopefully, there's a veteran in the community that would maybe want to join a position to serve. It's really, I think it's really important that we keep that office open five days a week.
Yeah, it's really the case for, of course, all of our departments. And this morning, Peter Gatawski shared with me that they have three permit tech positions open. And we used to get almost 200 applications per position. And for those three positions, they had three applicants and none were qualified. So Eric and Whitney have some great ideas about what we can do to initiate, to improve the recruitment process, which is great. So they'll begin to work with him. But I think that's the story among several of our departments.
Thank you.
Okay, so turning the, turning the page, I just have a little paragraph here on the status of the Budget Committee. I thought I would document that for memorialization purposes. So as you know, the county received resignations from two of the three sitting citizen members on the Budget Committee. A recruitment was held, and we received 12 applications for the two positions. The commissioners reviewed the applications and selected four to be interviewed. These were interviewed by three separate panels consisting of a county commissioner and two county staff. The four finalists were interviewed by each panel and scored individually by each panel member. And while the interviews revealed that any of the four could serve the committee well, the two applicants receiving the highest rankings were selected and notified of their appointment. And an appointment meeting, or an orientation meeting for the new members, well, was scheduled for the end of March, was actually today. So I met with both of them this morning for an hour and a half and gave them the overview and some of the important budget matters coming up. I also gave them some materials from last year so they could get themselves familiar as much as possible with the duties that they've signed up for.
And those appointments are scheduled for board approval on Wednesday. And I believe, based on the scores, staff had suggested one candidate for one year and the other candidate for three years. But of course, that'll be the board's discretion on, on Wednesday. And certainly, not getting ahead of, ahead of the board, but thanks to Greg for getting them ready to go because here we are in the middle of the budget process. And we'll move quickly from here.
Can I just ask, have the, the other 10 who were not selected been notified? Or, sorry, is it 10 or?
There were eight, and I've called most of them.
Okay.
I called them and thanked them for applying. So I think I've, I've maybe called all of them. I, I, there might be one or two that I haven't called yet. But I just wanted to thank them. And I think that's really something that civility and politeness is really important because this is at a huge position that we really need. And so, yeah, I actually got to talk to quite a few of them. So.
And there is a formal, we have letters that actually go out to each one of them. So they are, and I'm not sure where we're exactly where we're at with that, but no, Sharon was working on that. Sharon and Carol. Okay, so a couple of things I'll just highlight for you in the details. Just note that overall, the ending fund balance is county-wide, and this is a few pages in. This is the summary of all county funds. Our ending fund balance, our projected ending fund balance, which is a summary of all the revised projections that all of the departments have made on a month-to-month basis. So when you roll all those together, we're projecting an ending fund balance of $164.9 million. You can see that in the lower right corner of that page. And that's up slightly from $164.5 last month. So as we go through the year, that's a typical trend that we'll see, where our revenues might be coming in a little higher than we expected, that we budgeted, because we budgeted those conservatively, and our expenses might be coming in a little bit less than we budgeted.
Greg, on the next page, I noticed that recording fees are trending less. It's, the footnote says $200,000 less for recording.
Which footnote is that?
Number C.
Yes.
And I would think with interest rates going up, that, that trend would continue and less people would be refinancing.
I think that would be a logical conclusion.
Yeah.
The other, the other option there is because they're going up, folks will hurry up and refinance before it goes too high. So.
I know.
Then we'll budget for less activity this next year.
Maybe they already did that.
Yeah.
Yeah. Let's see if you can find the Behavioral Health Fund 274.
Oh, I did have a question. The ARPA funding, is it actually $38 million on the dot? Or is it, is there, is it?
38.4.
Isn't it .4? But yet, our projection says $38 million here.
That might have been a rounding. Yeah, that was probably just due to rounding.
Okay. Because I was thinking like somehow $400,000 came in. So, all right. Thank you for that.
We'll revise that just to be a little bit more precise.
Well, so is there a $19 million check two times, and then there's another amount from somewhere?
Well, I think it's more than $19 million.
It's 19.2.
It is? Okay, okay.
Right.
So we'll revise that just to improve the, and it might be, it's 38.4 something million. All right. So if you flip to the Fund 274, just a couple of points that I'll make here, I'm looking at the Behavioral Health Fund 274. And overall, the ending fund balance projection is $5.3 million. Last month, it was $4.5. So about an $800,000 increase. And that is really comprised of, up above in the revenue section, there's been a, they've revisited all of their capitated OHP revenue forecasts, their fee for service and the federal grants, and have just revised those as we start to get towards the end of the year. So that's increased the overall revenue projection by about $600,000. And on the public health side, their fund balance projection is about $3.5 million, and it was $3 million last month. And again, these are just a summary of changes, revised projections on revenue. We're not seeing a lot of big swings anymore, but as we, we're now in February, we're about two-thirds of the way through the year. Folks are starting to get a better idea of exactly where they're going to end up at the end of the year. And I believe that might be it. I don't think I have any other comments. Are there any, any questions for me?
I did have a question. We have a projection to spend $50,000 on the Tamala wastewater study, and it's still showing as a project, or wait, what, it's showing as a projection, but we haven't spent any of that money. And I was just wondering where that was going to come from. You know, is it Chris Duddy going to be handling that? You know, is it Chris Duddy going to be handling that?
Is this in?
It's on page 78, the CIP fund, that, it's, the wastewater study is on that fund. 465.
And is this the one that we funded out of ARPA?
Well, you know, yeah, I'm like going, it's, it's sitting here, and I'm going like, hmm, what's going on with this?
Yeah, if we're talking about the same project, that'll be funded out of Fund 200.
Okay, so it shouldn't be showing up here then, right?
Right. Well, there could be.
Something on top?
Plan, I'm, I think that that's probably, it'll show up there as an expenditure. Trying to think how this will work. It may show up as an expenditure, and we'll have the revenue come in on the other side from ARPA. I think that maybe is why you're seeing it there. So it'll, it should continue in the CIP. That's where we want the expense to land, but we'll reimburse it out of ARPA.
Okay.
I believe that's our, our plan to move forward with that. I've talked to Chris about it.
Okay. I just, I just wanted to make sure we were doing something there.
Yeah. Any other questions?
Well, I just, at this moment in time, wanted to acknowledge how hard everybody worked at the rodeo, the High Desert Stampede last weekend. The committee of seven actually took a big, bold stand, and they added 10,000 in event, and that was done months ago. And the number of people at the event were the most, that my brother-in-law, who grew up in Redmond, in Terrebonne, has never seen that many people inside at a rodeo ever in Deschutes County. That was Friday night. Saturday night, it was practically double. And I just, I know we're short employees for the, for the fairgrounds, and truly, the shortage was evident Saturday night, so we've got to get some more people there, too. I mean, we really, we've got to get more people in our community working, so. But I want to thank them, acknowledge the stampede for their great work, and it looked, you know, great exposure, and I can't tell you how many times Steve Kenyon said Deschutes County at, at the rodeo, and it was all televised. So he kept saying Deschutes County, and I'm thinking like, wow, huh, he should be getting like $10 for every time he said that, because it was a great, it was really nice. I mean, he grew up, he's from Pendleton, so he definitely knows Deschutes County. But Jeff and Courtney, his sidekick, were, they were there working Saturday night, because they were short. Truly, it was shorthanded. Were you there? Yes.
Saturday night, I was.
Yeah, there were truly long lines everywhere.
Yep. It was amazing.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Greg, thank you very much for your service to Deschutes County. Want to acknowledge that it's been a pleasure to work with you. You have answered your phone at the most awful times, and I truly appreciate that, and I wish you all the best. And if you want help with packing, I know some really good people that are good at packing. Yes, we could volunteer, my husband, right? He, yeah, he's really good at packing, so, anyway. But we really do appreciate all that you've done for our county, and you even had to move to Deschutes from Crook, so thank you for doing that.
Greg, we will see you again before your last day, right? Or is this it?
I don't know if, I don't think I'm on the agenda on Wednesday. I'll be here, though. I'm here all week.
Well, we'll probably have a cake or something.
Wait for a drumroll.
Monsters Inc.
Yeah.
Well, what about the new budget members? Are they going, they're going to be on our regular agenda, so you'll probably be presenting that.
I'll be good for that, yeah.
Okay, so.
And thank you very much. It's been truly a pleasure and a great experience working here with all of you, and, and I wouldn't change it for the world, it's been great. Thank you. Made lots of new friends. Hopefully, most of them I can keep as I move on to some other place with the ability now with electronics, should be able to stay in touch. And I'm still going to keep a foot in central Oregon, so, yeah. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Greg. Okay, it looks like Laura. Thank you so much.
Thank you. For the record, Laura Skundrick, administration. So last year, as you know, you allocated a new category of video lottery funding to support projects and organizations that align with your goals and objectives and other priorities for the year. $60,000 was allocated to three organizations that were chosen for funding of $20,000 each. Those were Deschutes Basin Water Collaborative, Deschutes Collaborative Forest Project, and Friends of the Children. So these organizations provided you with a mid-year status report earlier this year on their funded projects, and at the end of this year, will submit their written completion reports on those projects. But as we prepare for the fiscal year '23 video lottery allocation exercise, I'm here to seek direction on how the board would like to proceed with special project grants moving forward, kind of continue that discussion that we've had previously. And in the staff report today, we had outlined several options. So I'm happy to run through those if the board would like, but I'll stop there for any questions or feedback at this point.
I think if you want to go through what you've presented.
Okay. So the first option would be to continue funding these current fiscal year grantees with special project support grants next fiscal year, so kind of a similar allocation during our allocation exercise next month could be considered. We could, if the board liked, for those organizations to submit proposals for projects that would be included for those funds. We could definitely work with them to do that. I can stop there or move on to the second option.
Well, so this is in preparation for this year's annual budget, is kind of the mindset. So I'm thinking through the steps here, but really, that's the big picture. We're putting direction to what will be in the proposed budget and on the spreadsheet for our video lottery, obviously.
Thank you for that clarification. Yes, and so our second option could be to identify new potential grantees for those grants and not fund the current grantees again for next year. Another option could be to transition our current grantees into service partners. And as you'll see in your meeting materials listed are the service partners criteria. The, the current framework of the program, we have 13 service partners that fall under one of three categories. Those categories are mandated or sole source, county initiative, or county impact. And I'm happy to go through those definitions, if the board would like, as well. The.
Did you say we have 13?
We do, currently have 13, yes.
We should have like 14, shouldn't we, or 12?
Or another option is some combination of those, so we could continue funding our grantees as, as we are. Certain ones, if we want to pull into the service partner program, kind of look at the criteria, we could do that. Or do a little bit of both, create some new special project grants for next fiscal year and transition this year's into service partners. It's at the board's discretion.
What kind of revenue projection? Do we have that, Laura?
We do.
Okay.
Yes, so the current, with the current projection, and we're still waiting on a couple pieces to come together here, but we're looking at probably around 500,000 of unbudgeted funds in the video lottery fund for fiscal year '23.
And how does that compare to last year?
A little bit greater, because the video lottery proceeds, projection is a little bit higher. And that came from the state projection.
How much higher?
I want to say.
You know, we have like, less than 400,000 a balance when we were spending some money the other day.
In current year, yes.
Yes.
Yep, right around 400,000 unbudgeted. So I'm looking forward to next year, fiscal year '23, I think we'll have about 500,000.
Okay.
That's rolling the, rolling the existing 400 into, into that 5, or is the, are those separate numbers?
Yes, it would, it would be included in next year's, yeah. So I, I want to say that the state projection is maybe around 50 to 75,000 dollars greater this coming year.
Yes, Whitney.
Good afternoon, commissioners. For the record, Whitney Hale, Deputy County Administrator. I think as Commissioner DeBoe identified, what we're trying to do is get a little bit of direction in how we frame the spreadsheet that comes to you for the allocation exercise, but it's by no means a decision that you would need to make today. And so what we could do is, we could put kind of a placeholder into the spreadsheet for these amounts, and then the board could have a little bit more time, if needed, to think about that prior to your video lottery allocation exercise, because that is when you're really formally be committing the funds, and you can see all of the requests at that time, edco, service partners, and kind of all, how it all hangs together. So if that's helpful, we as staff can certainly kind of placeholder this on the spreadsheet in a, in a non-committal way, and give you time to think about how you'd like to move forward on these. So I don't know if that's helpful.
Yes, absolutely. The only, the only item that would kind of take a little bit of pre-planning is if the board wanted to see proposals from any of those organizations, so I could work with them before your allocation exercise to have those ready for the board to review.
I believe that's happening in, when is video lottery coming?
April.
April.
Next month.
I know, I talked to, I left the director for CASA a message the other day. She originally had, you know, there's just this huge shortage of foster children, the number has just gone up tremendously in central Oregon. And I know, I said, please, are you going to get us some kind of application? I'm not sure if it, you know, would go. We do have some ARPA funding left, but, you know, it might be something that we could look at helping out. I don't think we've seen that yet, though, have we, Laura? I did, I did leave her a message about a week ago, so I think she was out of town then, but she said when she got back that she would be following through with that. So, I know. But I, I'm so appreciative of what the funding we did do for Friends of the Children. I know that they really appreciated those additional funds.
Yeah, absolutely.
And they are expanding their program, and they're, you know, who has suffered more than the children of Oregon? And so getting those children that have really been behind, you know, giving them that little boost really does help with the Friends program.
I guess I would say that the, the three organizations who we supported with special project grants last year, I believe, are, have been providing really critical services for our community that are very unique in the, in the year span that we, that we provide them with these grants. They continue to do so, and I, I believe that they are appropriate entities to consider converting into service partners. If the other commissioners are not there yet, I guess I would, I would ask that we do a second round of special project grants. But if, if we are, as a board, are ready to consider adding new service partners, then that would be my first choice.
So Laura, do you think it would be possible to kind of, to do a work session with our 13 service partners? I mean, I really appreciate this today with what we did with the 60,000, but just to remind us, okay, these are mandated, you know, what, how each one of them has fit into being a service partner?
Of course.
I, I would appreciate that.
Absolutely. I do have that information if you have a specific question, but I'd be happy to come back to a meeting and discuss with the board.
Oh, that, I think that would be, I would appreciate it. I know, I don't know, Commissioner DeBoe, if that would be okay for you?
It's always good to hear from people. Yeah, just fitting it all in, so that sounds like a part of a big ask.
Does that mean we would, we would want to hear from the, the 13 existing service partners?
Well, maybe they could just send us a page, you know, just a, two or three paragraphs, okay, this is what we've been doing, we've been funded for the last 20 years by you, these are how many people in the community we've served. But I was, when I was a new commissioner, I was told that maybe a few of our service partners should be reanalyzed, and so, I know we really haven't done that, we've just tried to keep everybody whole, and just to make sure that they're still doing their part for the community, and there's not somebody else that, you know, are we limited to 13 service partners? Can we add three more?
So a couple, I'll answer that in a couple parts. So we are not limited to a certain number of service partners, it's at the board, board's discretion. And I believe years ago, the board created that framework, the criteria, so that's also at the board's discretion. The service partners do, at the end of the fiscal year, they submit their return on investment forms, and it's kind of exactly as you described, it's a one-page kind of overview of what they've been doing and how many people they've served in our community, and we do have those readily available. They have submitted those already for our video lottery allocation exercise. So those are typically part of that packet, but if we want to review them beforehand, we can definitely do that.
That'd be good. So, okay, are they saying the year end, then it's 12:31, or are they doing the 6:30 year end?
They, I believe they submitted them about mid-March, or earlier in, in March, and so it goes to about February, I want to say.
Okay.
With a projection through the end of the year.
Okay, good.
And Commissioner DeBoe, just to get clarity on your ask related to service partners, were you asking staff to provide a summary, or you'd like to hear from the service partners?
Oh, right, if we could just maybe have a presentation with the documentation, so we can look at it and then talk about it at a meeting? I mean, not, you know, if they've already submitted forms, then that would be great.
Yeah, that'd be good. Let's just review what we have.
Yeah, yeah.
But then, for the, the three entities that got special projects grants, we actually did not ask them for proposals last year.
Correct.
Because kind of the, our, our timeframe for deliberation on that just kind of kept creeping and creeping, and finally, it was, it was suddenly like, oh, if we're going to do this, this fiscal year, we got to move ahead. So I guess to go back to, you know, my, my interest in, in either seeing those entities receive another, another years of special project grants, or be converted to regular service partners, from those three, I would, I would suggest that we, we, we ask them for written proposals this year.
So I'm thinking, Deschutes Collaborative Forest Project, if we give them $20,000 a year, what are we expecting to be done? As in, if it's good for the community, I want it to be good for the community, then, and we should all understand that. But what's the, what's the deliverable? As I say, I, I think of it as, you know, working towards that social license to be able to do forest management. It started with big investment, Collaborative Forest started with big investments from the federal level that would be guided by this work. You know, it's like, let's go do this, and if somebody pays for it, referring to the federal government, we agree we can do this. So, yeah, I'd say, if we give them, and you're chairing this, co-chairing this, what does the $20,000 go for? As I say, my head, my head goes right to pizza and soda at a meeting. And I, I don't, not to be rude, but I'm just saying, what do we do with it?
You're typically not pizza and soda at a meeting. The Deschutes Collaborative doesn't, doesn't feed and.
Yeah, so what is $20,000 by?
The, so the, the things that are critical to maintain, you know, the, the social license is critical to maintain, and the ways that the Deschutes Collaborative does that are, A, by keeping a diverse group of interests around the steering committee table, you know, maintaining agreement on things. And we're seeing, we're seeing, you know, quite an example right now with some trees that, in, in the West Bend project area, that were, not, not, I wouldn't necessarily say mismarked, but there, there are trees that probably shouldn't have been marked for, for commercial removal, that, that were marked, and the group is trying to sort that out right now. But, you know, to, to basically keep the coalition of all these diverse interests on board with active forest restoration and fuels reduction. So we need facilitation to keep the steering committee in agreement, and then we also need community outreach services to keep the, the broader community on board with what the. the Steering Committee has agreed to, to essentially pitch to, pitch to them the forest that we could have, which is healthier, more resilient, provides better habitat, is much less of a risk to our homes. And then make sure that people are comfortable with and accepting of what needs to be done to get to that. You know, the actual, the actual active management that happens on the ground. People need to accept prescribed burning not too far from their house. They need to be comfortable with mechanized equipment in the forests, doing commercial or non-commercial thinning actions, maybe shutting down their favorite trail system for a few weeks while the contractor is in there working. And that is, that maintenance of public support is something that, that the Forest Service doesn't do for itself. And it is something that, when you're, when you're trying to do operations in a community, you know, in the forest next to a community with, you know, 100,000 or 200,000 people in it, is something that can get, that can go sideways very quickly, that, that implementation on the ground, if the community doesn't know what you're doing and why you're doing it, and why they should accept these disturbances in their backyard, or along their favorite trail, or in the places where they.
So facilitation and outreach are the two things? So if there's, do we have any invoicing back and forth, or it's just we write a check, and then this is what we're doing? I'm just wondering, you know, what, what is the $20,000 going to? So somebody's facilitation of the meeting?
When, when Mayor Russell came to present to us, she, she kind of laid out what, what the budgeted dollars for the Chutes Collaborative get spent on. And we could, you know, we can pull that back up and take.
Well, and I just, yeah, so it's kind of those, just like any of these topics, usually, you know, you can kind of, oh, yeah, I understand that. And as I say, I just, I think, do I understand what we're going to do if it became a multi-year? Because it's great to go do it. I mean, I'm glad we made this investment. Are we going to do it next year? Are we going to do it five years in a row? I don't know. That's what I'm trying to learn about right now. You know, if we say, okay, yes, we're going to make it a service partner, and you can expect $20,000 or more, because somebody's going to say it's going to be escalating costs, does that, you know, pay for X amount of facilitator hours? So that, I'm just trying to put that kind of logic in my head, to say, oh, yeah, that's why we funded that. Because I don't have a feel for it right now. That's all I'm just trying to figure out.
Yeah, I think you could ask the same thing about any of the service partner that we have, and that's why they, that's why they give us the end of the year report.
That's why. It'll be good to see those end of year reports.
The other thing I would say is that there's also, to, to, to develop the agreement, you know, the, the, it's not just people sitting around a table and discussing, you know, discussing things. There's, there is a whole lot of information, data, and analysis that, that feeds into the collaborative discussion, so that people can reach agreements.
Well, as I say, I'm just thinking of line items. So facilitating, outreach, and then professional services for analysis. You know, if I have those bullet points in my head, then I'm like, yeah, this is exactly why we do it.
And then there's also, you know, on, on, in, at certain points in time, there is advocacy work. You know, the reason that we have, the reason that we have a little bit more flexibility under state spoke management rules to do prescribed burns here in our community is because of the Chutes Collaborative's leading work on essentially pushing the state spoke management advisory committee to, to provide that flexibility, because we have tens of, you know, maybe over 100,000 acres of NEPA-approved prescribed burn work to, to get done, but our burn windows are so tiny that we are, we are, yeah, I mean, we have that big of a backlog of prescribed burn work. And that prescribed burning work is what will save people's homes from burning to the ground in the future.
Thank you. Good discussion. So, these are video lottery dollars, right? And the big picture is, this is a partnership with the State of Oregon. Many years ago, we don't have, we don't allow ourselves to have local gaming. Cities and counties can't do gaming. So these dollars come back through the, the statewide system. And they were targeted for economic development from day one. And now, one of the justification is emergency food, clothing, and shelter, stabilizing people so they could be comfortable to be able to be part of the economy, or wherever they are in their life. And, you know, there's lots of great benefits in, you know, having a social license and managing the forest, so we don't burn our houses down. So I'm just pointing out that these are those video dollars that are the most flexible, and it's up to the Board to figure out how we want to invest them. So we'll do our homework on the other service partners, get a big picture of you for getting into this next year's budget. Go ahead, I was just trying to.
Yeah, so I, I, I put forward those two possible scenarios, and.
What scenarios are you referring to?
Either, A, converting those three special projects awardees into service partners, or B.
Referring to the two collaboratives?
Two collaboratives and Friends of the Children.
And Friends of the Children.
So all three of them?
Or B, or B, providing another round of special projects grants to those entities if we want to evaluate them for another year.
I think it would be appropriate if we could look at the 13 service partners. Some of them have probably been there for a long time, and just make sure that we are getting our money's worth there. And then that will maybe determine whether we add those, these three can fit in there, or we leave them separate, you know, and make that. How soon do we need to make a determination, Whitney? Do we have a, a time? Is it like, soon? Like, two weeks, a week?
Two weeks, Commissioner.
Two weeks.
But we're happy to, I mean, this is, we want to give the Board the time you need to make an informed decision on your allocations, and we can definitely prepare that, and I think also provide you historical service partner funding year over year, so you can kind of see those investments and what they've looked like historically.
Okay. Okay. Laura, do you have enough to go on then?
Yes.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you, sir.
Did you want us to give specific direction on whether to hold a certain amount of funds aside to, to, to consider, to consider either those special projects again, or, or conversion to service partners?
We could either, if you'd like to make that decision now, or when we come back for that work session, that would be fine.
That's not, that's not too late.
We have two weeks.
Okay.
And even if, yeah, I think even if you wanted to make that decision while you were allocating, during the video lottery allocation, I think that would also be a time where you could say, you know, looking at all the things that are in play, we want to hold this amount of funds for this purpose. So I think we have some runway.
As, as a, as a placeholder.
Correct.
Have we, have we seen numbers from EDCO yet?
That is coming next week?
I believe so, yes.
So no, but soon.
Okay, okay. I just was curious.
Eric Crop and I met with interim CEO John Stark, and started to discuss their proposal, which, yeah, is forthcoming. We just met with them last week or the week before last, so we're anticipating their request.
Okay. And then I saw Steve Curley was promoted to John's position, so.
Yes. Yes, so John Stark said it's, he doesn't have a position to go back to as he, as they recruit for his position, so it's a, it's an interesting situation.
All right.
Yeah, there's a whole crop of new faces over at EDCO. It's exciting.
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you. Thank you, Laura. Thank you, Whitney. Okay, next item, David Doyle, Nick Leelak, revisions of our code.
Yes, Commissioners, this is actually County Policy GA20, which is the grant application policy. And we provided you with a red line with some requested changes that the Board would at least consider. Essentially, we're, we're asking that the Board allow department heads to have the authority to approve grant requests and grant awards in the amount, in an amount not exceeding $10,000, provided there's no match requirement and no additional staff hired in association with the grant. And then that same process for the County Administrator, up to $50,000. Anything that doesn't meet those requirements or those thresholds would still come to the Board. And just as an example of what's been motivating some of this, is we have one that's teed up to come to you folks that has gone back and forth between health and legal and admin a few times, and it's a $1,500 grant. And I'm not the best money guy, but I think I've spent about $1,500 of staff time working on this $1,500 grant, which is nothing more than an invoice billing. It's the Department of Public Safety and Standards providing $1,500 that the Health Department can use for certain activities that they undertake as part of their normal operations and business. And they're able to invoice back up to $1,500 for this. And so there's obviously no additional staff involved, there's no, no match fund. It's just $1,500 that is available through this particular grant. So, we've, we've put this, I think Commissioners DeBoe and Adair will remember, I think Eric brought this forward a couple of years ago for your consideration. It wasn't written in this manner with these lower thresholds, and so this is another attempt at bringing this forward and, and asking if the Board has any appetite for, for allowing some of these lesser grants that don't include any match and don't include any staffing to be processed either at the department head level at $10,000, or to the County Administrator, up to 50.
So Dave, currently, we have no thresholds?
Currently, all grants have to be approved by the Board, including this $1,500 one.
Yeah, I remember like a $6,000 one a few months back that I was asking similar questions about.
Yeah, and that's part of the grant, GA, because of, the way GA20 is drafted, all of them have to come through the Board.
Now, would they, would they, would these still appear on the consent agenda? I mean, just kind of send directly to consent agenda, or as opposed to?
No.
It wouldn't appear on the consent agenda. Now, we could certainly create a process whereby there'd be a laundry list of them generated, and that list could be shared with the Board as an informational, but there wouldn't be a, a need to bring them through on a consent agenda, at least as this is drafted, I suppose, if you.
I mean, that would, that would reduce the amount of Board of Commissioners time that I think we're inefficiently spending, you know, reviewing these, to just, you know, looking at it on the consent agenda, and, and, you know, giving the thumbs up. But I don't know whether that would actually reduce staff time for, you know, writing a staff report, and, you know, getting it in the packet and things like that.
I would think a consent agenda wouldn't be difficult to include the documentation as part of an informational consent item, if that's what the Board wanted. We could certainly work at redrafting the proposed amendments to include that.
I mean, I, I'm personally pretty comfortable with these thresholds in this policy, but if my fellow Commissioners were not as comfortable, then that might be an intermediate kind of option. It'll still be on your consent agenda, and we just don't need to spend 15 minutes or 20 minutes of Board time, you know, Board deliberation time on it if, if it's such, for such a small amount.
Actually, in today's economy, I think people in our community listening to us say $10,000 is a small amount, when people can't even afford to fill up their gas tank. Honestly, I don't know. I'm sure I voted against it last time, and that's how I feel today. I feel like that's why we're here. We're here representing the taxpayers, and it's our fiduci, it's our responsibility. And I, I think it's important, and the fact that this one for 1,500 is circled around, I don't think that's really our fault. I think it's circled around for other reasons. So, yeah, you guys can battle this one out, but I'm, I'm not for it, and I feel like it's, it's a responsibility I have as a County Commissioner to make sure. There's so many things that are going on in our county. You know, we have, what? Over 1,000 employees? We have, we spend a lot of money, and it was just like $400,000 today that somehow didn't show up on our financial statement. Now, why wasn't that there? And because I had just heard about that $400,000 when we were doing our reconciliation, and all of a sudden, we had an extra $400,000 on our ARPA funding that I wasn't aware of. So, I, I just think we need to be able to pay attention.
So, when I got involved with the Audit Committee years ago, we had a pending, like a to-do item or something, and it was a grant tracking and reporting for the end of the year audit. And, you know, if we take a grant in, sometimes there's expectations and requirements for a grant. And if we don't follow through with them, we could be in violation, and sometimes this could be at the federal or state level, or other dollars that come to us. So I've always held on to that fact, that we kind of need to know each part and piece. It can be done in a spreadsheet, and, you know, reporting requirements. It could be, you know, just a checkbox in a spreadsheet for reporting requirements, but we should definitely keep track of each and every piece. And I'm sure we, that's our intention as an organization. We don't want to not do that. I don't mind just being informed of some of these after the fact, though. I mean, I'm not in a spot where I've ever thought, oh, well, you know, how did that get to us, and let's all say no? So I'm not too worried about some of these, just like as mentioned, a $1,500 ends up being kind of a line item or a invoicing activity for some service that, you know, a state agency wanted to fund, which is fine. So, I mean, I'm supportive of, of doing something here, but with a specific, either, you know, Board meeting notification, does, I don't even need to see it on the consent agenda, but I mean, it should be, yeah, officially notified somehow, either, you know, last week, this grant came through, and, and I don't know what a status looks like to the Board in a public meeting, or, you know, lines 37, 38, and 39 have been added to the spreadsheet of, of grants. You know, whatever it would look like, it'd be fine with me. So there's three general opinions.
I mean, from a staff perspective, what is the most streamlined?
Well, not going through the Board, obviously.
What is the most streamlined way to do this? A consent agenda item, or some kind of separate spreadsheet of grants that it, that I don't know if we maintain or not?
Well, I'm sure Finance has it, because we had to do that for the annual audit, so.
I'm guessing that, I'm, but, I mean, wouldn't they do that department by, you know, cost center by cost center, as opposed to?
Yeah, so it's not in one.
List that, you know.
But maybe our financial system can do it, too.
Because I'd rather not ask for them to create a consent list that we don't already have.
I just remember when I had $1,718 to carry forward, and somehow that money disappeared off the financial statement. But I knew I had that a carryover. And there's, you know, we're just talking here, money, there, money. A couple, maybe two years ago, we actually had a bigger carryover than what was showing in our financials, but because of all of our responsibilities, I was aware of it. So I just feel like, you know, we, it's really a way to know what our departments are, what their goals are, what their aim is, you know, who's, who's asking for what. And I, I think it's fiscally responsible, so.
I guess I would just argue that there are, there are a lot of decisions that we make that have really substantial financial implications, some of which, if we don't deliberate on, in a timely fashion, or we don't allow enough time to consider, we could end up choosing options that cost us a whole lot more, millions of dollars, you know, construction projects, things like that. And every 15 or 20-minute chunk of our Board meeting time that we clog up with something that is so small in scale, and which I have a pretty high degree of confidence in staff being able to process, is time we're taking away from the really big decisions. You know, like, if we want to have more time to talk about, we're all parked. You know, you need to, you need to get those 15 or 20 minutes from somewhere, right? And that's something that could cost us, you know, like, one option costs $2.5 million? Another one costs $7.5 million? Those are the kinds of, you know, financial issues that I think we, we need to make, ensure that we, we put adequate amounts of staff, of Commissioner time into, and the more we fill our, our, our agenda with, frankly, what I, what I would call busy work, the, the less time we have to spend on the really important discussions. So that, that's, that's the, I mean, in my mind, that's the argument for having a policy like this.
Boy.
There's a whole lot of stuff that I would like to spend more time talking about than a $1,500 invoice submission.
So I read the red part, talking about authority levels, and then it also does have the words Administrator, receive approval from the Board of Commissioners at a board meeting to proceed. So can you help me with the logic here, Dave, about?
Yeah, that talks about all other grant requests.
All other, okay, yeah.
That's what's been noticed to the county administrator and receive approval from the board of counties.
Okay, yeah, so all other. Okay, yep. So if there was a $1,500 grant, and I wanted to be notified, do we have any thoughts about how that would be?
You know, unless Nick has an idea, I would circle back with Eric on that. He's sort of in the all-things grants in the past. I know he's the one that's attempted to put forth some amendments to this policy in the past. Yeah, I'm sure there's a way to track that. If it's not already occurring within the current financial system, there would be a way to track the ones that would be either approved by the department head or by the county administrator and provide on whatever interval you want, monthly, quarterly, some sort of a list.
Maybe it's just other items, and it's listed as another item. Other items, number one, grant approved by department head on this date for this amount. Maybe that's all, it's as simple as that, because I'd be comfortable with that.
If I could just ask one question, Dave, just because I didn't have a chance to ask you this question last week, just for clarity, and I expect department heads would appreciate this, when it says, it states no, where was that, no match requirement. Clearly, that's no financial match requirement. Is it also no in-kind match requirement?
No match.
It's just no match, period? Okay, blank. Okay, just for clarity, it's great to have that on the record. Thank you. Okay.
Required finance or any type of in-kind, that that would be come to the board even if it was below those thresholds?
Perfect.
I'd propose approval with the expectation that any grants are listed on our agenda items under other items, you know, by name.
Is that, that's easier than doing a staff report for a consent agenda item?
Either way. I mean, we can track them, and if I...
But it can be, so my consent agenda means we're approving it by approving the consent agenda.
Right, it's on our consent.
That's why I'm talking about the other items. It can have a staff report and said, on this date, we did this, and we're going to do great things with these dollars. But it's under other items, and it's not a decision of the boards. That's where I'm going.
Again, separately, it could be a monthly report.
Yeah.
Or quarterly report that just gets generated electronically.
So it's not an approval, yeah.
And sent to the board of commissioners.
So I was staying away from approval even.
Right, because that does not make less sense.
I mean, I, you know, I could go either way. But I just, you know, it seems like commissioners like to have the oversight of approval and putting on the consent agendas, you know, a way for you to get eyes on it and to make sure you approve it without taking up a whole bunch of time.
But that's taking away the whole reason you'd be doing this, correct? I mean, if it's going back and forth and ends up on a consent agenda, that means not until the board approves consent agenda can you proceed with a grant.
Right.
If we don't have a meeting some week, everybody's waiting for the board to convene.
Yeah, it would save the department person the time of appearing, and so there'd be some savings in simplicity there.
Well, and then a consent agenda item, if I want to pull number two and discuss it, we might do that at any point in time, so that's why I'm staying away.
And that would delay it, then.
Yeah.
The person might not be available.
If people are comfortable with that, that's, that works for me.
Two of us might be comfortable with it. I'm just proposing that if we're going to do it, give the autonomy and, you know, get eyes on it at some point, because, I mean, that, you know, having that public, everything we do is public, but having, you know, come through us, so we just have the brain space on it.
Okay, is that a motion?
I will move as such. So I'm supportive of this policy change, administrative policy change, GA 20, with a reporting on our, well, reporting to be worked out to the board.
I'll work with Eric on what would be.
Don't need to me.
So would your preference be a monthly or a quarterly cycle?
Monthly.
Monthly reporting, okay. I'll get with Eric, and we'll come up with a process.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? Commissioner DeBon?
Yes.
Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
And the Chair, but, no.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you.
Okay, we now have other items.
Commissioners, we do have one at the staff level when you're prepared for us.
Okay. Any other items?
I didn't prepare, I guess. I was kind of busy last week. I did not leave town, but I didn't think about what...
I've got, one thing I wanted to report is the Board of, the State Board of Forestry is going to hold their first in-person meeting in two years here in Deschutes County. They'll have a day of board, sorry, I'm trying to find the date. They'll have a day of board meetings, and then they'll have a day-long field trip. And I still haven't found the date yet. It's in mid to late April. But their day of board meetings in, you know, inside corresponds with one of our Wednesday Board of Commissioners' meetings. But they will be inviting all of us to attend the field trip, which will actually go and visit some of the work of the Deschutes Collaborative Forest Project, the West Bend Project, and some other site. They'll go to West Bend, the West Bend Project, they'll go to Chevelin Park, they'll go to the Bull Springs Tree Farm.
And we might even be paying for a bus through our investment in the collaborative?
No.
Oh, okay.
The Board of Forestry is paying for the...
Okay, good. So is that trip on a different day than Wednesday, or?
The field trip will be Thursday. They asked me to do a little speaking piece, but they'll publicly notice the meeting so that everyone can tend, and I can get you the date at some point. It's a few weeks out.
Well, and then is there something very important at the Board of Forestry meeting to be? Because we could schedule either morning or afternoon.
I mean, I think the field trip is the thing that they're doing that's site-specific, but, you know, I have no idea what's on their agenda.
So next Wednesday, the 6th, I'm representing this area as the COAC Chair for Connect Oregon Final Review, working on getting over $10 million of funding for several projects in our community. So that's, I'm not sure if the meeting is starting at 8:00 or 9:00, but I'm sure I'll have a conflict there. And they say that perhaps we might have to have another day if we haven't determined it on Wednesday. So that's next week. And hopefully, Central and North Klamath will get some major funding that they've put in for, and Erickson for the fire suppression work up there with Erickson people in Madras. So we had some really good projects, and Band Airport. So Band Airport was number one, and then we have a project in Gilchrist, and then the Erickson project. So anything else? Whitney?
Thank you, Commissioner Dare. Staff has prepared a few draft letters for the board's consideration. This is related to your other items discussion from last week, related to congressionally-directed spending requests. And so I have hard copies with me that I'll pass out and kind of walk you through each draft for discussion, if that works for the board.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
That's okay.
So these requests, should the board want to move forward and submit them, are due April 1st? And so there's a kind of a tight turnaround on these this week. Commissioner Chang, I think this is a follow-up to something that you had raised in other items, so I don't know. I can definitely, if you want to provide kind of a recap of this process, I'm happy to.
Basically, Congress, particularly our two senators for Oregon, are accepting congressionally-directed spending requests that will, if accepted, get rolled into the federal fiscal year 23 federal budget appropriate, you know, into the omnibus appropriations bill. And this is an opportunity for entities to request things that federal funds are eligible for, but which, instead of having to go through a national competitive grant cycle, you can basically get your member of Congress to send to the top of the list.
So I'll go ahead and walk through the three drafts. The top draft is actually a request that came in from the City of Sisters last week. In 2021, the board signed this letter of support, April of 2021, for the roundabout at Highway 20 in Locust, and the City of Sisters was asking for board consideration for resubmitting the same letter of support, but through this federal process. And so this is just an updated version of the letter of support that was previously submitted, and this would be if the board wanted to move forward with this, we would provide this to city staff, and they would submit it as part of their request for that project. Chair Dare, would you like me to just kind of roll through all three of these?
Yes, of course.
Okay, I will keep going. The second letter, draft letter of support is, follows the conversation you had last week related to the Lepine Community Health Center. And I noticed that I printed, we have an updated version of this that has the correct addressing on it, so we would fix that, should you want to move forward with this. But this is in support of the new facility that they're seeking to build, and this would be submitted if it moves forward alongside their specific request, just as an additional letter of support. And then the third draft is a request for your consideration following your other items discussion related to access to the National Forest. And so Chris Doty was kind enough to kind of put together some framework in terms of a draft of what that could look like. And this is, most is in draft form, and it needs financial information to be submitted into it. And I'm unsure if we have that at this time, but these were drafts, you have that.
Yeah.
For the board's consideration. So if we move forward on this draft, we would actually be submitting this on behalf of the county through the federal portal for consideration.
So what is the dollar amount, then?
I can get that for you. But while I'm looking that up, let me just also mention about the Lepine Community Health Center request. They, I was told by one of Merkley staffers that the HERSA, whatever HERSA stands for, whatever federal agency HERSA is, they basically told the Lepine Community Health Center, if you're going to make a request, you know, a CDS request, you should ask for renovation and equipment, not new construction. So we can talk about this facility as, you know, like I said, you know, an expansion, but, you know, maybe just throw in a sentence somewhere that says, you know, we understand that Lepine Community Health Center is asking for renovation and equipment funding, and we support that request, or, you know, something. Just kind of add that little additional bit of detail.
Definitely. And are you, do we know for sure that they are going to submit this request?
That was what they told me.
Okay, that's great. I just had it forwarded on that component of it, just the letter of support, so.
Yeah.
So you need to take out the words "to build a new"?
Yes, I can finesse this to capture those edits.
Okay. And the Forest Services estimate on the 4606 Road, $6,000 to $700,000 for all the planning and construction costs.
Is there any parking area associated with that, or? There hasn't been one in the past, I guess, so there's no need to...
Yeah. I mean, it's a good idea. I mean, I think that they should put some parking out there, but...
And then it would be referred to as the 4606 Road?
No.
The new section?
It's the little piece off of, what is it, Johnson, what is it called at that point? Is it called Johnson Road, or?
Bull Springs.
The little piece that basically has been gated, that is not technically the 4606 Road. Well, part of it, one of the gates is on the, but the little spur that comes off of Johnson Road onto the 4606, that chunk is not called 4606. So the 4606 is running through there, and this would basically bring in not a new forest road, but basically a, you know, a service level one service, forest service road, it would bump it up to a service level two road that would tie into the 4606 beyond, you know, north of where the third gate is. And, you know, it would, it would basically run, I can run...
I've got the map you provided last week.
Okay. Yeah, well, so you could tell me what the, what the, what the road, what the road names are. There's Seismore, and there's...
It's around, yeah, Seismore is in that...
Is it Johnson?
Yeah, Johnson Road to Tyler Road to Tumala Reservoir Road.
Yeah, okay. So there's no Seismore.
One of the Seismores.
Seismore's at the end.
In there.
Okay.
So, yeah, a string of county roads would get you to this one mile of substantially upgraded federal road.
So then it'll be a gravel road, two-track converted to gravel?
Yeah, service level two.
Okay, and that's Forest Service term?
Yeah, they have three classifications.
Yeah, okay.
And I assume there would be a gate as well, because they want to keep, they want to keep the federal land back there closed down during the winter for winter range.
So is anyone else asking for this $6,000 to $700,000 that would have their name on a letter?
If the board wanted to move forward with the submission, there would need to be letters of support submitted along with the narrative piece, is my understanding.
There's a whole bunch of, like, cycling, running, and other groups who had all volunteered to be the requestor if we don't want to submit the request. So we can convert them to support letter, or entities, if we're willing to be the requestor, which I think is appropriate, because this access depends so much on county roads.
So this is uploading to a portal for the senators' offices or the committee of or something?
Yeah, no, the two senators have coordinated on an online submission form kind of portal.
So this is going right just to the senators' offices, and then they use their seats to be able to say, okay, well, let's make sure these stay on the list. So they don't need to be on top of the list, they just, if they stay on a list, right?
Yeah.
A funded list.
Yeah.
So it's really only 1.1 mile, and we're saying that it's going to cost $700,000?
This is based on what Chris put together. It looks like it's engineering and design of 1.1 mile.
A two-lane gravel road.
There is, the Forest Service prepped a spreadsheet for me. No acquisition costs, design permitting, planning, that might cost $150,000 if they have to do contract NEPA, because they basically only have a finite number of NEPA planning staff. Something that, something that we... Something that, something that we could actually, you know, if I, if I felt like Cody Smith had a whole lot of extra time, we could volunteer that.
I definitely saw.
But, yeah. So contract NEPA and, you know, and, and, you know, engineering, design, a hundred fifty K, construction renovation, two hundred and twenty-five thousand, site work, twenty-five thousand, equipment, you know, mobilization of equipment, in and out, three hundred thousand. That's how they got to seven hundred. And I can share this spreadsheet with you all.
Well, these are all ideas and the senators wants to hear ideas, so I'm not opposed to putting ideas out there and say, if we had this kind of money, this is how we'd spend it.
Mm-hmm. And if they agree to this, this congressionally-directed spending request, it doesn't mean that they're sending the money to us. I mean, we, that's one way you could set this up. But we could just ask them to put in, you know, put in a special account at the Deschutes National Forest and set them loose on it.
Well, if we only ask for six hundred thousand, maybe they could do it. If we're talking about gravel roads, a little bit cheaper. If we're not using, if we're just putting some gravel down.
Probably have to get eight hundred thousand because of the cost of fuel.
Oh, yeah. Well, I mean, I'll, we're, yeah, let's, just trying to think of spending money and inflation.
And the social license to be able to open up that road from one lane to two lanes.
Oh, yeah. I'm sure that's going to be happy, it's a mile.
Well, that means a tree might have to be cut.
There might be, there might be a little bit of clearing, yes.
Uh, so thanks for preparing these. Is there?
Does somebody want to make a motion on this one then?
So the, the forty-six oh six road specifically?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I would, I move that Deschutes County move, make a congressionally-directed spending request to members of our congressional delegation for a reroute or a, an alternate access to the forty-six oh six road and the Deschutes National Forest.
I'll second it.
Any further discussion? I will say I must have gotten at least a hundred emails from bikers really upset about that road being locked. So Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
Commissioner DeBon?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. Okay, so let's go to the Lepine Health Center next.
Commissioner Dare, just for staff's clarity, what dollar amount would you like to use in the final?
Did you not say seven hundred thousand?
You did, I'm sorry.
We should use seven hundred thousand.
I was, uh.
No, but, but, but did you, you had, you had said maybe only ask for six hundred thousand. Do you, are you okay with seven hundred thousand?
Did I not?
It was just, um, see, seven hundred?
Yeah.
Thank you.
No, I don't want to spend seven hundred thousand on a gravel road for one mile, truly. But if they're going to do a study, how many decades will it take? And maybe it'll be cheaper by the time it gets to be able to be built.
Okay. And then we have the two letters of support for external submissions, which would be for the Lepine Community Health Center with modifications as the board has discussed and staff has noted, and then the City of Sisters request for the roundabout.
Okay, so we should, the Lepine one, so you have to take it off to build a new, you know that.
Yes.
You've got to make it sound like we're, we're renovating and adding equipment.
I mean, I think we can, we, you can talk about the expansion, but then just say, we're at, you know, they're making a congressionally-directed spending request for renovation of the old building and equipment for the expanded facility or something like that.
Okay.
Are we asking for a dollar amount on this one?
I think this is a letter of support in, in support of their request and I'm not clear what the, their.
What they're asking for?
Will be, correct?
Okay.
I, yeah, I, I think that they were shooting for something in the range of one point five million, but maybe we want to, I can, I can check with them if we, if we want to include a dollar amount, which seems like it'd be a good thing to do.
Okay. Is that, can we make, can we go ahead and approve the letter now then? Is there a motion?
I'll move letter of support for the Lepine Community Health Center's request of congressionally-directed spending, and the amount determined.
Second.
Any further discussion? It's another reminder of why we should have asked for four million from the state, because then they wouldn't have to be asking for so much.
Four million.
Commissioner DeBon?
Yes.
Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
Okay. And the chair votes yes. Thank you, Whitney. So now we're to the Sisters' letter that we're just reissuing because we actually sent this a year ago.
For this, also for a congressionally-designated spending request?
No, this, I believe the original letter was to the state. It was a letter of support for the project and now submitting it at the federal level.
I, I mean, I guess my one question about this one is, this is the, this is the only congressionally-designated spending request that I, that's on my radar screen where they're asking for money for something that could possibly be covered by the, the infrastructure, the federal infrastructure bill? I mean, there was a lot of, there was a lot of road infrastructure money in the infrastructure package. So I, I, you know, so I, there's a little bit, there's a little bit of me that's, you know, wanting to know whether they are seeking those funds or whether they're competitive for those funds before, you know, fast-tracking them to a, you know, a direct congressional allocation. But at the same time, it's, it is an important project, so.
If it's helpful for the commissioners, staff could coordinate with city staff and come back to you under other items on Wednesday, that would still give us a day buffer in terms of the submission deadline. So if you want to, I'm happy to, to reach out and get some more information on that and bring this one back for, on Wednesday.
I think that sounds like a perfect example, idea, Whitney. Why don't we do that Wednesday then if we can still get the letter out by April 1st, which is Friday, right? Is it Friday? Yeah, okay.
Thank you, commissioners.
No, thank you so much, Whitney.
Thank you.
And thank you to Megan, Chris and Laura who helped to pull these together.
There we go.
Thank you. Megan, Chris. All right, so anything else under other items?
Chair Dare, I'll just follow up on a question you asked earlier about whether anybody had left our veteran services office.
Yes.
Because it does show a vacancy. I coordinated with Keith and no, nobody has left. One staff is out on FMLA and our manager there moved one support tech temporarily to an assistant VCSO during the time the staff is out. So it, it shows a vacancy, but all five positions are currently filled.
Okay, great, okay, good. I know, I just kind of, you know, it's just, it's a very small department, it's one, they lose one, they lose twenty percent. Thank you, Nick. Great. All right, so should we go into executive session now? E-reel property?